All right, good evening, everybody. I hope everyone is doing well. I will share, Tony's not coming, she's not feeling well, so I am not entirely sure. Amanda said she was going to be late, she's coming for the 6 o'clock. I have no idea where Evan is. And not sure about Dave either, but I think we can get started. He's what? Okay. 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 Cool, cool. All right, so I think we can get started with Jeff Preble. Jeffrey Preble, sorry.
All right. Well, good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
Yeah. Riley. Yeah, so I'm Jeff Preble from Lake Pierce. And we recently completed a study in looking at the Washington Street and New Auburn areas for extending utilities to support potential growth in those areas. So this could just kind of have a summary, just to kind of bring you up to date of what our findings were and how we went about looking at the areas, that sort of thing. So we're going to talk about the study areas, we'll look at the existing connection points for both water and sewer, and then look at, you know, what the options were for connecting into the existing system. Also going to chat a little bit on Vicar Road area as one potential. And if folks have questions or anything, as we're kind of running through here, feel free to speak up and address those as we kind of go along here. So the basic areas kind of extend from South Main Street area out to Broad and Mill, and down into the Carrier Court neighborhood, and also down to the south toward Hackett Road. That was kind of the New Auburn area, and then looking at Washington Street, particularly on the sewer side, we're kind of looking from the Brickyard Circle area all the way down to Hard Scrapple, and kind of filling in where some connection points and stuff would be in those areas. Water study kind of overlapped in the same areas. There's a couple different zones here. Again, looking in the New Auburn area, kind of the same general footprint, then also over on Washington Street. And with the water system, there's two separate pressure zones that we're dealing with, so most of the area in here is on the high-pressure zone, and then when you get down onto Riverside Drive area, down to lower elevations and stuff, that's on the low zone. So that makes a difference when you're connecting between the two different systems and stuff there.
Does low zone mean requiring pumps and things?
When you make, excuse me, when you make those connections, they usually install a pressure-reducing station or pressure-reducing valve. So if, say, there's a fire or something like that down along Riverside Drive, and the pressure starts dropping in those areas, that valve will open up and take water from the high zone and filter it into the low zone. It also helps create, you know, some circulation to keep things going. We don't like dead ends in water systems, if you can avoid them. So the connection points, they kind of match up pretty well. Sewer system, you've got sewer at the top of Carrier Court there, at Hector Street and Vicar Road. Also, South Main and Ipswich, it kind of ends at Mill Street and Broad Street at the apartment buildings and stuff there. The area down by Exit 75 is served by pump station on Washington Street, and that connects by a force main up to Hard Scrapple. So we've got that area. Then there's an area by Philomar and Washington that's got some sewer service to it, and also up toward Brickyard Circle. They kind of line up the same on the water system there, too. On Riverside Drive, Route 136 there, it kind of ends at Delecto's, the water system, and also at Mill and Broad, and a little bit more areas served on Washington Street for the water system compared to the sewer system. So we kind of looked at this in phases, and, you know, it kind of depends on where development would end up taking place out in these areas. But you need to have the, connect into the existing system someplace, obviously, so it kind of made sense to look at the Vicar Road area first, as one area, and take a look further south at, down toward Prospect Hill. Then you could also look at, you know, going out Witham Road and the lower end of Broad Street as some potential areas. And when we took a look at this, we basically took a contour map of the area, and we started looking at all the different watersheds, and seeing where, you know, you could potentially route sewers and where pump stations would be needed, that sort of thing. You know, for instance, if you're looking down around the old Prospect Hill Golf Course, there's the low spot through, you know, on the street areas is down toward Blue Bear, and so you'd probably end up with a pump station in there, but where do you connect it to? So you'd have to go up to someplace on South Main Street, or if the system is in Vicar Road, then you could connect, you know, that way for that area. And same kind of goes as you go further south, you know, on Witham Road and Broad Street. I mean, and, yeah, and Lower Broad Street. And those areas, it's all kind of hilly. It's kind of up and down everywhere, so there'd be a few pump stations and that sort of stuff that would be needed, you know, depending on where things are happening. Washington Street, the main item there is the Little Andy River, and, you know, if you wanted to create some sewer service in that area, how do you cross the Little Andy? And I'll talk a little bit further about that here as we go through. Kind of focusing in on like the Vicar Road area, you know, we can start out at Ipswich and South Main Street and come down to the intersection of Vicar Road, and it's all pretty much downhill to Riverside Drive, except for the big gully, before you get to like the Hector Street-Vicar Road intersection. So, you know, to get a gravity sewer system down through that area, we'd probably have to cross-country and kind of run down through the gully area to get down onto the sewer system that's down on Riverside Drive.
Is that gravity from there, once you get to Riverside, does it flow gravity from there to the treatment plant?
It does, yeah. Yep. Everything from that Carrier Court neighborhood does flow by gravity, and it goes to the siphons that go under the river and over to Lopka. It's a little bit south of where Delecto's is.
Looking at the plan, why don't we consider tying into Hector, I guess? There's being sewer there, so keeping it along the roadway rather than going cross-country?
Right. So just a little bit further west there, you got the laser point? Some of these, you get the little laser point. Okay. Yeah, so you're coming down Vicar Road, and there's a, there's a big culvert area before you get to Hector Street, and there's a pretty decent-sized gully here, so you end up coming down into this area, then you've got to rise back up again before you can get to the, to the existing sewer there at Hector and Vicar. So chances are, the elevations aren't going to quite work in order to do that, you know, you've got your existing elevation of where you're tying in at the manhole, Vicar Road, and your gully is going to be deeper than that, so you have to kind of, you know, look at the potential cross-country area down through that area.
I'm assuming this requires, sorry, I'm assuming that would require some sort of easement process?
For sure.
So these easements don't, there's no easement that cuts off of the road down through the gully as shown on the green arrows?
Right. Yeah. Yeah, there definitely have to be some coordination with the homeowner and the landowner and that sort of stuff before we even get into looking at that too closely.
What's the recourse if a homeowner says, or a landowner says they're not interested in providing an easement?
You know, that's a possibility. In that case, you'd have to look at a pump station or something like that to get it from that low spot up to where you can tie back into the existing system again.
What kind of, I mean, cost is not our purview. So I'm asking this question, recognizing that this isn't necessarily part of our decision per se, but what's the difference between, say, being able to run that gravity feed, assuming we're going to have to purchase some kind of easement versus a pump station? Is there, like, what's a pump station cost, I guess?
For a small area like this, it's not going to be as expensive as some areas, because you don't have that big a flow and that sort of thing, but a lot of pump stations are going to be, you know, $350 to three-quarters of a million dollars potentially, depending on what size pumps and that sort of stuff that you need, how deep they need to be to handle flow and that sort of thing. And you've got the long-term operation and maintenance costs of those pumps as well, so anytime you can try to eliminate a pump station, you're going to be better off to try to do that. There's been several pump stations over the years that have been eliminated off the system, just for that reason. Kind of focusing in there around the Prospect Hill area, we took a look at, you know, how things might go through this area, and you get the same kind of thing, before you get to the old clubhouse there at Prospect Hill, there's a little bit of a rise in this area where this little drainage area cuts across, and so they may have to kind of veer off from South Main Street in order to get gravity flow down to where a pump station would end up being down here by the Blue Bear area. Further out, where the old Back Nine was, you know, you could get gravity flow to come down into this area. You know, if development happens further out, you've got this kind of big ridge through this area here, these contours show, so you'd have to, you know, this is kind of the high spot, you know, flow from development up in here could possibly get down to this area. But there is a possibility, you know, depending on how, you know, whatever happens development-wise, that you could maybe be able to sneak something along the turnpike interchange and get over to the sewers that are over here in the Carrier Court area, potentially. So you have to kind of look at where development is and kind of follow the lay of the land and that sort of stuff to see how best things could get rooted. But here again, you know, if you have a pump station, then you'd have a fairly long force main that would come back up over the hill and then potentially tie into something out here at Vicar Road.
Could you talk a little bit about the difference between the force main and the gravity main and the ability to tie into one versus the other for services?
Yeah, the, so gravity, everything's flowing downhill. All the service lines and everything from the houses and stuff all connect into that. When you get to the pump station area, you've got a big wet well, and the pumps located there goes into a pressurized system essentially, so, and you've got to overcome that elevation difference from where the pump station is to where your tie-in point is, basically. So that's all pressurized, all the way up through. So, you know, in those cases, you want to tie into the gravity system rather than trying to, because you need to overcome the pressure in the line if you're going to try to tie into the force main. Make sense? So this is the crossing at the Little Andy. This is on the northbound lane, kind of looking south, and, you know, if you're trying to connect the sewer system over in this area somehow, and then get that connected, then you've got to either cross the river or attach to the bridge or do something like that. So that's an expensive proposition, for sure, and just, you know, that's a real difficult area to try to deal with. Same thing we have over at Hackett Road, if we're trying to connect from Hackett Road over toward Washington Street, potentially provide sewer service or water service over in that area, you've got the railroad crossing. Anytime you're dealing with a railroad and trying to get a new utility underneath their tracks, it's a major effort in order to do that. They've got to acquire a great big sleeve that gets jacked under the tracks, and then the pipe is slip-lined through that, and have to pay for their inspector to come out and sit in his truck while all that work's going on for a week or more or whatever, and it ends up being an expensive proposition, for sure. They can be done, they've been done in other areas and replaced in other areas, but it's an effort, for sure. So looking at the water system and the things, the different phases and stuff that we looked at, we plugged these areas into the overall hydraulic model for the water system, and looked at, you know, trying to eliminate the dead ends and that sort of thing. We've got these, these different phases that were kind of outlined, and how we kind of plugged that into the overall system. The areas in black here are the existing mains, areas, and all these little red numbers that are on here are all the different analysis points that was plugged into the hydraulic model. And so we looked at, you know, making these connections coming down South Main Street, down Vicar Road, and back on Riverside Drive to kind of complete that loop, and also, you know, South Main Street and potentially connecting it on to an extension off from Broad Street there somehow, and looked at what the resulting pressures and that sort of stuff in the system would end up being.
Can you explain real quickly why Broad Street would be Phase 2, but South Main would be Phase 3 in this model?
It's just the way we looked at the, at the model itself and looking at the different areas. The most logical place, it's not necessarily in line with how things would get built, it's just on how it got put into the hydraulic model, basically. If you wanted to try to build something out, particularly in the Vicar Road area, you know, that's going to be the first place that you're going to go to, to make that loop connection there.
And is there a meaningful reason to go down Broad before you would go down South Main at that point?
Yeah, so if you come down, say there's something going on at Prospect Hill, you've got a big development there, potentially, you're going to want to connect coming down South Main Street down over the hill, then ideally, to get the required fire flows and stuff that you need in the system, you'd probably want to make that connection over to Broad Street, then back up to Broad and Mill, to create that whole loop to be able to get the fire flows and stuff that you need. When you look at that, it's the, the insurance requirements. Insurance Services Office is what it is, and they provide the municipal insurance ratings based on the fire flow. So it's based on these different categories here, and the more dense area that you have than the higher fire flow and stuff that you need. So in order to achieve that, we looked at the pipe sizes and, you know, how we're going to best get those fire flows to meet those requirements. For a high-density area, you're going to be looking at something, you know, 2,500 to 3,500 gallons a minute that's going to be required, and so that's kind of what we based our model runs and stuff on, is to achieve that higher fire flow to those areas. This whole area is kind of driven by the elevation of the tank at Ipswich, so you've got a maximum elevation there, you know, around 360 feet, so anything below that, you can serve by gravity through that, through that pressure system. If there's anything above that elevation, then you'd have to get a booster station or something like that to lift the water up to a higher elevation. So that kind of governs, you know, governs the area that can be looked at. So there was a couple things that we looked at. One was an eight- and 12-inch loop at Broad Street, and 12-inch from South Main down toward Vicar and on Riverside, and then we also looked at 12-inch through all that area. In order to achieve that higher fire flow, you'd end up with like a 12-inch lines that would be required there. And again, it's all dependent on what that density is, based on this chart here. What we're aiming for, as part of that, is minimum pressure of like 30 to 35 PSI in the system during fire flows. You're going to want a minimum pressure of 20 PSI, you don't want to have the pressure in the system drop below that, and try to maintain a maximum pressure of 80 to 90 PSI in the system. So these two figures just look at the two different options with eight- and 12-inch potential there, and also what 12 inches all the way around, which will get you the higher fire flow in dense development areas. Looking a little closer at Vicar Road, I understand that the city's got a parcel that's potential for development there, kind of stands between South Main Street and Vicar Road, and so one option might be to, you know, if you're going to serve that area, is to loop that through that development, potentially. So, you know, I don't really know what this layout and stuff looks like here currently, but there's a possibility that you could connect off from South Main Street and run both water and sewer through this area back onto Vicar Road, and then down the hill with the water line and back up toward former Delecto Farm, or Delecto Brothers' spot up here. And again, you'd end up with your gravity line kind of coming down through this lower portion of the sewer part.
So, Mr. Preble, I'm just going to do a quick little time check. So we're at about, I think, six minutes before 6 o'clock, and we're going to start the meeting at 6:00, so I'm not sure how much you have left, so definitely want to give you your time due, right? And if we need to come back, if the board has more questions, you're just kind of opening it up to conversation, or if you feel like you're kind of coming to an end, just let us know.
Yeah, we're pretty much at the completion here, so, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. But we, one of the things we want to look at, if we get into looking at how, you know, what this arrangement and stuff might look like, is, you know, we've got to obviously talk with the landowners and stuff there for any potential cross-country things and get permission from them to do any potential work there. Vicar Road has a lot of ledge and stuff in it and areas, so that's something that we'd want to take a look at, do some geotech borings and that sort of thing, to determine what those conditions are, and from there, you know, we could develop cost estimates and that sort of stuff, on potentially what all this would mean to serve that area. So I think that's most of the stuff that I had. I don't know if there's other questions you have or anything I missed, Mike, that we need to cover.
Now, this one in particular eliminates two dead-end water mains and connects them so they're looped, so it does have a water quality improvement component to it.
Right.
And the city is working on a grant application that would potentially fund a Phase 1 water, sewer, sidewalk, and roadway improvements. We don't know if we'll be successful, but this would be part of Phase 1.
Are you speaking specifically about the South Main, or are you talking about the specific configuration?
So a way, this is a way, we're trying to investigate with the work that Jeff's doing, what the options might look like, but we'd have to go to further design, cost estimates, understand ledge and property ownership willingness to participate, but if this grant application would potentially fund service to the area that's shown on this map, even if the configuration changes based on, you know, which properties it crosses and where the ownership is.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I think we're good. Thank you very much.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. I totally forgot.
Anybody else want to?
It's what you got emailed yesterday. I know. It's not new today. Sorry, I missed it. Is Eric joining? Is Eric? He's going to come? Okay. I'm about time. I said I'm about time. Should I start? Do you want me to start? I'm just going to start. No, I know. I'm just going to start without Eric. All right. Okay. Okay, so I would like to call to order the September 12, 2023 Auburn Planning Board meeting. First item on the agenda is roll call, and I will start to my left.
Darren Finnegan.
Tim DeRoche.
Paul Jacques.
Stacy LeBlanc.
Evan Seere.
Amanda Garet.
Riley Bergeron.
Okay, so seeing as we have two full board members absent, I'm going to elevate two associate members, and that would be Amanda and Tim, and you have full voting rights. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is, are the meeting minutes, so I will seek a motion to approve or amend the minutes, and again, those are the minutes of July 11th, August 8th, and August 10th. Do you have a motion?
So moved.
Do you have a second? Protection because of the disturbance totals more than an acre as well. And they meet all, they meet all requirements of the general business zone in terms of lot size, dimension, density, and they have also met all provisions of site plan review. They do have two entrances to this parcel, and one of them will be closed off except to emergency vehicles and, trying to find site plan. And the other one will be open for right turn in, right turn out only. Really, the, this use and the entrance and exit to it will improve the conditions of the site because it is only right turn in, right turn out. And the applicant also proposes to have, to leave to the city of Auburn a 20-foot wide easement for a future river access walk open to the public. And for the waivers that they requested, the waivers really have to do with the existing site conditions, making the requirements impossible to meet. So the first waiver that they request is that, is a slight change for the loading dock dimensions, and this really, we, staff actually determined that this waiver isn't necessary because they do meet the loading dock dimensions for at least one of the loading docks, but also they will not be having large trucks. It's really just a small self-storage, kind of small U-Haul trucks will be coming in and out. The other waiver is that, is that none of the drive entrances can be closer than 100 feet to the nearest public street intersection. This isn't possible because the whole parcel runs along a public street, or it runs along the intersection of Turner Union and Center Street, rather. This also has to do with the width of the curb cuts. The existing width prohibits the applicant from meeting this exact requirement. So staff is, staff believes that all of these requests for waivers are appropriate, and we do not see any negative impact from them. So all of our comments were addressed. We were mostly concerned with the right turn in, right turn out aspect of the site. And our recommendation is that planning board approves this with the exception, with the special exceptions that they, that they obtain all of the necessary permitting and that they keep one of those gates closed off. And I am good to answer questions.
All right, any questions for staff?
Yeah, you mentioned the waiver request under Chapter 60, Article 5, Section 60-6073 with regard to loading spaces. I'm a bit confused. In your comments, you mentioned that they've actually met that standard?
Yeah, it appears for at least one of the, for at least one of the loading spaces that it, it looks like it's been met if you measure from the center of the driving way from, let me see which one it is.
It's actually. Okay, so the waiver is still required because not all loading spaces, not all loading areas have met the requirement. Is this what I'm understanding?
Well, we just, we actually just included that because it was in the applicant's request, but as we were evaluating it as staff, we actually don't think that that piece of the waiver is necessary because we think that they actually met it. But we're putting it in there because it's part of the application that the applicant requested.
So if we have the applicant here, we can ask them that question.
What you asked was accurate, I think, Evan, that one of the loading spaces meets the standard, and we didn't think it was necessary to issue a waiver because another one doesn't.
There's actually two. I was the one that did the measurements, but there's actually two that meet the loading, the required distance of 50 feet. The one in the front is the one that does not. And maybe we, you know, if it's an issue with the board, maybe we could ask the applicant what the use is, if there's, you know, if there's a concern about that one. But there, it seemed like there was two ample locations to get any of the bigger trucks that would be coming into the site for this building.
Yeah, being, several of these projects over the years, I'm not particularly concerned with meeting the loading requirement, understanding that we're not talking about tractor-trailers. I'm just trying to decide, do we actually need to do this or not? Because if the waiver is not required, we shouldn't take action on a waiver that's not required. But if the waiver is required, because as I'm reading, the ordinance says loading zones, so that would mean all loading zones are required to do that, then we should put the waiver in place. I think it's a way to both clarify for ourselves, for the public, and also for the applicant so that there's no later date at which someone comes back and says, you know, this should or should not have happened.
Okay, any other questions for staff before bringing the applicant forward? Okay, is the applicant here to come forward with questions? And I know what the first question's going to be.
Good evening. My name is Andrew Carmen. I'm with Goral Palmer, the site design engineers for this project, and with me is Aaron Sommer and Ricardo DeRosa with the developer Diamond Point Development. So I'd just like to thank Catherine Cook for putting together a great presentation. I think she covered pretty much everything I would have covered, so we would like to thank you for your time, and we'd be happy to answer any questions you have at this time.
I have a quick question. A lot of information here, went through it as diligently as I could, and it's kind of a simple question. Snow removal, I presume, will be private, not municipal. Where would snow removal, plow banks, stuff like that occur on the property given its proximity to the river and things like that?
So we would have snow removal, the piles would end up towards the rear of the building on the other side of the loading area back there. And then we would also have some space for snow storage right in the, I guess, planned east corner there.
So in short, you wouldn't be impeding neighboring properties with snow banks and things like that, is that correct?
Correct.
Evan, did you want to ask a question that you had about the loading? I don't want to like not have them up here and then.
No, I hear you. The question's not for the applicant. I understand the type of vehicles that are going to be going in there. We've done several of these types of projects in the past. The question was really a technical one for staff. Does one loading zone qualifies meeting the ordinance, or does it not? Because either we need the waiver or we don't. So that wasn't really a question for the applicant. I'm not sure that it's fair to ask them that question.
Okay, well, the reason why it is in there is, and correct me if I'm wrong, but the applicant wanted you to put it in there, correct?
Yeah, it was a waiver request, but looking at it, we weren't sure that it was actually necessary.
Okay.
So I think the safe play is to issue it for the third loading zone, but we as staff don't think that it's entirely necessary either, but somebody could argue otherwise.
Okay. All right, any other questions for the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I will entertain or seek a motion for public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Excellent, okay. So if any members of the public would like to come forward, you have five minutes. State your name and address. Okay, seeing none, I'll seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Excellent, all those in favor? Perfect. All right, so thoughts, comments, any more questions after hearing from the applicant, from hearing from staff? Sure.
One comment. We have worked on this site for a decade or more to try to find a use that works here. We've seen multiple proposals. They've all insisted on left-in, left-out turning movements, and this is the busiest intersection in the county, and it just didn't work. And I have to say that, you know, Diamond Point was able to assemble an additional property beyond what anybody before them was able to, and it has been a great partner in trying to eliminate curb cuts along this stretch, make it better, but also provide an attractive building at one of our major gateways. And then also the ability to have the Riverwalk extension, we would secure that with this project. Diamond Point would eventually construct that segment on their property for the city when we achieve the same type of easement to the south and then potentially to the north. So I think they've just been a good partner that's been able to assemble the properties that were needed to make the traffic work and to provide the Riverwalk.
Thank you.
With regard to process, would staff prefer that we take up the waivers as a motion prior to a final approval or disapproval? In that case, I make a motion to grant waivers to the site plan, a special exception to the site plan for the four waivers described on page three of five under Section 3 in the staff report dated September 12, 2023.
Is that it? Okay. Do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have discussion? All those in favor? Okay, so there's other suggested motions in the packet, so I'm sorry, did you want to like also read those conditions?
Yep, no, I was just doing that. So when a waiver is requested, usually we have to identify the specific waivers and grant them first before approval. So that's why that was on the way.
Okay, okay, all right. So at this point in time, I'd be looking for a motion.
I make a motion to approve the proposed three-story self-storage facility located on Turner Street, parcel IDs 251-019, 251-021, and 251-022, to include the waiver requirements previously approved by the board as presented in the report and in the attached application with the following conditions: that the site will be right turn only entering and exiting; the gated access shown on the plan will remain gated with access only for emergency vehicles and CMP who has an easement to use this access; obtain an NRPA permit by rule to place stormwater outlet systems within 75 feet of the high water line prior to construction; receive a stormwater management permit prior to construction; receive a Tier One wetland permit from the Maine DEP prior to construction; receive a general permit from ACOE prior to construction; obtain a main general construction permit from the DEP prior to construction; grant the city of Auburn a 20-foot wide easement along the river for a future path as depicted on the site plan; no development activity shall occur until all permits have been received from code enforcement; and no development activity shall occur until all bonding and inspection fees have been determined by the engineering department.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do we have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a site plan review special exception for the Life Forest Management Company and Partnership for the conservation cemetery and the burial and cremains on Trap Road. So just kind of as a heads up on this, we did a text amendment, right, that allowed us to then potentially, which did come forward to us, review a site plan review. So I think we're familiar with this concept. We approved the text amendment, and now we are having a site plan review for it.
Thank you. So, yep, like you said, we heard this before. We were anticipating having this conservation cemetery come before us, and now Auburn has a definition for a conservation cemetery in our Code of Ordinances. So Life Forest is proposing a conservation cemetery, which will offer woodland burial of cremains only, which means no full-body burials, only ashes. The proposal is to use existing trails from past logging, except for, except for some small improvements over wet areas with bog bridges and some just general trail maintenance, keeping the trail flat and level, even just with, to the current trail and conservation standards. So a lot of the review of this project really consisted of us learning about Maine cemetery law and especially veterans' burials and possible future maintenance of the town in the case that a cemetery might become abandoned in the future. And we learned a lot from that, from that investigation. First, we learned that, so there's, one of the main laws says that municipalities can adopt their own standards detailing how to maintain graves, grass, and headstones. Life Forest has a, and that is in the case where a veteran is buried, there is a requirement that they be maintained. Life Forest has a veteran burial release form acknowledging that the maintenance responsibilities are different for conservation cemeteries because they do not have grass, headstones, and all of the other traditional things that the full-body cemetery, cemeteries will have. And so this type of cemetery differs from non-conservation cemeteries, and their expectations do as well. It says in our ordinances that a conservation cemetery is a type of natural cemetery that includes a conservation management plan that upholds best practices and provides perpetual protection of the land according to a conservation easement or deed restriction. The applicant has provided a draft format for both of those, and that would be.
Okay, seeing none, um, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. All right, next item on the agenda is a site plan review, special exception for the Life Forest Management Company and Partnership, um, for the conservation cemetery and the burial, burial and cremains on Trap Road. So, just kind of as a heads up on this, we did a text amendment, right, that allowed us to then, um, potentially, which did come forward to us, review a site plan review. So, I think we're familiar with this concept. We approved the text amendment, and now we are having a site plan review for it.
Thank you. So, yep, like you said, we, we heard this before. Um, we were anticipating having this conservation cemetery come before us, and now Auburn has a definition for a conservation cemetery in our code of ordinances. Um, so Life Forest is proposing a conservation cemetery, which will offer woodland burial of cremains only, which means no full-body burials, um, only ashes. The proposal is to use existing trails from, um, from past logging, except, um, for, except for some small improvements over, um, over wet areas with bog bridges and some just general trail maintenance, keeping the trail flat and level. Um, even just with, with the, um, to the current trail, uh, trail and conservation standards. So, a lot of the review of this project really consisted of us learning about Maine cemetery law and, um, especially veterans' burials and possible future maintenance of the town in the case that a cemetery might become abandoned in the future. And we learned a lot from that, from that investigation. Um, first, we learned that, so there's a, one of the main laws says that, um, municipalities can adopt their own standards detailing how to maintain graves, grass, and headstones. Um, Life Forest, uh, has a, and that, and that is in the case where a veteran is buried. There is a requirement that, that they be maintained. Um, Life Forest has a veteran burial release form, um, acknowledging that the maintenance responsibilities are different for conservation cemeteries because they do not have, um, grass, headstones, and all of the other traditional things that the full-body cemetery, um, cemeteries will have. And so, this type of cemetery differs from non-conservation cemeteries, and their expectations do as well. Um, it says in our ordinances that a conservation cemetery is a type of natural cemetery that includes a conservation management plan that upholds best practices and provides perpetual protection of the land according to a conservation easement or deed restriction. The applicant has provided a, a draft format for both of those, um, and that would be included in the approval. And they have, staff believes that they have met the requirements of site plan review. Um, they are constructing four parking spaces that they will have with crush, that they will, um, out of crushed gravel, rather. They will have a four-by-six-foot sign. It will not be illuminated, contingent that they get a sign permit. Um, they also plan to have an accessible burial grove in line with USDA National Forest Service guidelines for accessible parking in common areas, and there is a detail of that in the application packet. And the trail will be six feet wide to keep it as accessible as possible, um, given that it can't be, um, entirely the whole way because it is keeping in its really natural form. Um, and it will utilize existing paths. They will install bog bridges where the path crosses wetlands, and, um, the applicants have reviewed their plan and all materials, um, about with the burials and have affirmation from Maine CDC that, that this is acceptable. Maine CDC also says that this doesn't actually need to be, that this type of cemetery doesn't actually need to be evaluated with the same kind of rigor as a full-body cemetery because, because, um, ashes can actually be buried anywhere in Maine, it turns out. So, that's another thing that we learned with, um, with this investigation with the state. Um, and no wetland impacts are anticipated. We recommend that, that the planning board approve this plan. We think that it's a really unique option for people to pursue. Um, the applicant is here, they have an existing conservation cemetery in New Hampshire, and they found that folks there have been really wanting to, or that folks have been really wanting the option to have something like this in Maine. Um, and I am ready to take questions.
All right, any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, do we have the applicant? Okay, you can come forward to the podium.
Hi, everybody. Having a watch party from the Life Forest team in New Hampshire.
Excellent, okay. So, are you, any prepared comments? If not, then we have the board, and you can ask her any questions. Okay, seeing none, um, it's nice meeting you.
It was nice to meet you, and thank you so much for the diligence and extremely hard work that, um, everybody in this planning board put in. I'm extremely appreciative. I even learned a lot through this process, so thank you.
Excellent, great, okay. All right, so at this moment.
Actually, I did, I do have one more question for staff, if I could.
Oh, sure, sure.
The, the, the legal opinion you sought says that, they said the waivers they provided would alleviate any responsibility of the veteran upkeep.
Right.
Was, that was sufficient enough, that it wasn't going to be?
We believe so because the, it requires that, um, the, the upkeep is required that, um, that cemeteries be kept clear of grass, fallen branches, and headstones be kept clean. And it, it's labeled that as cemeteries, which the Maine CDC actually says that this doesn't need to be, this doesn't need to be classified as entirely because it's not having full-body burials essentially. And seeing that, we believe that people will seek this out for the specific nature, we don't think that it is meant to apply to this.
Thanks.
Okay, excellent. So, at this moment, I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. So, any members of the public would like to come forward, five minutes at the podium, state your name and address. Okay, seeing none, I would seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, excellent. All right, any questions, dialogue, discussion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the proposed conservation cemetery at parcel ID 035-009, as described in the materials provided in this hearing, um, um, and, uh, seeing that they meet the, the findings described in the staff report, uh, with the following conditions: the conservation cemetery shall only bury cremains, and no full-body burials will, will occur at the site. Construction of bog bridges, um, will be used for all wetland crossings, all required state approvals, um, uh, will be, will be, uh, uh, sought and, and gotten to include CDC individual records, and the city engineering, uh, shall inspect, uh, the, the apron.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? All right, seeing none, all, um, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Excellent. All righty, so the next item on the agenda, it's kind of a site plan review night, site plan review, special exception, um, proposing a business recycling wooden pallets. So, I will hand it over to staff.
This is, um, residuals management international LLC is proposing a business recycling for wooden pallets at 249 Merrill Road, parcel ID 186-012. Um, the site basically is existing, um, it's, there's an existing office building, work buildings, warehouse, um, and home. The app, um, the applicant is actually proposing a minor site grading and construction, uh, to include, um, essentially a loading dock. Um, they're not creating any kind of new, uh, impervious area. Um, they're not, you know, considering any type of new lighting. They're really utilizing an existing facility, but because of the requirements of it being a recycling facility, it falls under the definition essentially as a, um, I guess for better use, better term, it's, uh, the, um, uh, what am I trying to say? It's a, it's kind of a, um, the, uh, uh, special, uh, it's essentially a recycling facility or a, a, a transfer station. Um, it falls under that definition, under the, under the, um, article, under the industrial district, so. With that, they needed to come, uh, back to the planning board for, uh, an approval. There, again, there's no, there's no amendment to the site law, location of development. It was established before 72. There's no stormwater permits, general construction. There's no wetland impacts. The entrance is, is not, um, you know, being changed, the parking, road power, anything like that. Um, and in addition to that, um, there's really not a lot of traffic that's being generated. They, they actually looked at that a little bit. Um, they used the access management and traffic requirements under section 60-799, uh, for a 300-foot site distance requirement. They have that. The I, they looked at the ITE manual and looked at calculated, uh, trips of 16 trips at the peak hour. Um, solid waste will be handled inside the building. Casella will be removing the waste, so there's no hazardous materials. Um, essentially, this is a facility that assists folks, and I'll let the applicant talk a little bit more about it, but it's, it's folks that need a hand in terms of getting off their feet that may have had some type of, um, chemical dependency or something like that, and then now recycling these pallets and providing a service back to the community. So, um, we're, you know, staff is suggesting that they approve this project, and, um, and that, you know, we've got a few, um, you know, conditions to include the, um, the bonding inspection fees for the engineering department and then building permits because we're going to be, they are going to be, there's an existing structure that's on the site right now. It's not 100% completed. Um, they're going to, it's going to need the engineer to take a look at that, um, and apply for an additional permit, and then the actual, uh, loading dock itself, there'll be some structural designs on that. Um, and then the existing buffer areas. We want them, anything that's existing today, we don't want them cutting any of those.
Excellent, any questions for staff?
Yeah, um, I was able to determine pretty quickly, this is the old Randy's Auto Parts. And, uh, I worked there when I was a kid, and I see in the presentation from, uh, the Hudson Engineers, I actually circled a particular paragraph talking about DEP and stuff like that. My concern is how much the grounds there may be disturbed in construction or anything that happens in that property, knowing what's under that soil. Is there, or are there any provisions in place for soil disruption of what is certainly contaminated soils back there?
So, it wasn't, it wasn't a requirement to provide a phase one or phase two environmental site assessment for this particular application, it's not necessarily something that we review. Um, I can say that staff did ask for, specifically for sediment and erosion control. When they do, um, if they, when they do disturb the earth to put this loading dock in, um, there is BMPs that is requested and is put on the site plan. There's actually notes on the site plan for the sediment and erosion control plan. Um, as far as a phase one or a phase two, that's really how you determine if there's any kind of soil contaminants existing. Um, it's, it's kind of interesting, there's no land transfer here in particular. They acquired, they acquired the land through, uh, a federal government seizure, um, and, um, there was no, as far as we have for documentation as staff, it's just a lease, a lease between the current owner, the applicant today, and someone else that owns it. So, there's no, um, path for due diligence on that part. Um, that would be, any kind of soil disturbance would go back on, uh, you know, in terms of contaminated soils, and having to deal with that would go back on the landowner, not necessarily this, this applicant.
And that's what I'm getting at, is my personal concern is there's a potential can of worms. And, um, like I said, I worked there in the early 90s. Um, I know what it looked like back there. And as environmentally conscious as we've become as a community, which is necessary, I think it's important to note that we really need to dot our i's and cross our t's in regards to anything that happens in that property because there is soil contamination, uh, just from personal experience.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things there, um, that, you know, certainly the planning board can make conditions of the approval. Um, one is testing, there's existing wells on site, and having those tested, uh, for water qualities could be a condition of that approval. In addition, there's, uh, sewer and water is available within 350 feet, so if they are considering an additional building, they would, um, based on the PUC regulations, they would have to bring in public water and sewer, but not at this time. They're not considering any additional square footage. Um, but certainly, uh, Timothy, in that regard, um, they, they, you could make that a condition of the approval, that they, um, you know, in light of, um, workers being at that site and the, you know, possible environmental hazards, you could request that and, and be part of, um, a condition of approval.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? All right, seeing none, I will seek a motion to open up public comment. Oh, applicant, I'm sorry. Would the applicant like to come forward? Sorry, thank you.
Good evening, Kathy. Thank you for seeing us. Uh, my name is Jeff Allen from AE Hudson Engineers, and I think that's an interesting concern, and I would expect that if we were doing, uh, any extensive grading or, uh, reshaping of the earth there, that would, the concern about contaminated soil would be very valid, and, and we'd certainly want to look into that. Uh, at this point, all we're doing is putting in a loading dock, and that'll be in between the two buildings at the center of the screen right now. Um, it's, you know, the existing grading is shown in solid lines, the, the proposed graded, grading is shown in, uh, kind of dashed lines, or the, just the opposite. Existing is dashed, proposed is, is, um, solid, and, you know, we're only adding or moving around about the top foot of soil. So, the, the grading is relatively minor. The, the shape is already there between the two buildings to have a drop-off for a loading dock, and the changes that we're making are very minor, um, and just kind of squaring up a corner so we could back a truck in there to load and offload materials. One thing I would add is that, uh, you mentioned wooden pallets. Uh, in our, uh, second submission, uh, to the city, uh, we mentioned we'll also be doing some cardboard, paper, and plastic. Uh, it'll all be on the same site. Um, it'll all be handled the same way as far as, uh, cleaning up, packaging, bailing, and shipping it off-site. So, there's, there are some additional activities that are happening there other than just the pallets that were discussed earlier. So, I think that's, that's all I have for discussion.
As a point of interest, what, what's entailed when you say, um, pallet recycling? What, what is that process?
I assume, well, uh, Mr. Bolduc, the, uh, applicant is here, but I assume they're tearing, as pallets get used, they get dirty, they get, uh, broken and trashed. I assume they're taking off the bad parts and putting on new parts. So, it may mean tearing down three pallets to make two acceptable ones, uh, and then scrapping the other materials.
I was curious too.
Honestly, was just curious.
Yeah, me too. I was like, what is that?
Yeah, it's, it's, you know, sometimes as these get used and moved around, they get pretty bunged up, and this is re, re-enabling them to be used again.
Perfect. All right, any questions for the applicant? Okay, since I jumped the gun, I'm going to do it right now, all right? Um, I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent, opening up public comments, so if you would like to come forward, uh, five minutes, state your name and address.
All right, my name's Mark Ferguson. I'm a dear friend of Peter Bolduc. Um, I've, I've worked adjacent to his, his, um, pallet rebuilding facility for a while now, um, and I have been on Merrill Road with him, trying to help clean the place up. Um, it, to help further address your concerns, presently, the, the, the material that's between those two buildings has nothing to stop it from running off. A loading dock would, would contain that, um, right between those two buildings, anything that is between those two buildings. I would also point out that, um, at, at, at some point when the fourth building was approved, um, the, um, electrical infrastructure that was built went, goes right between where the loading dock is going and downstream. So, so this is all soil that has at some point been disturbed. Uh, so, anything that, that we're doing on the site is going to just improve containment between these two buildings and help, help reduce any kind of runoff that's happening. Um, this facility was a mess. It was a blighted industrial facility when we, when we got a hold of it, and, uh, it has continued to get cleaner and cleaner with each passing day. Uh, we're, we're getting rid of a lot of the bad materials, sending it to the appropriate places, and we're making sure that this place gets cleaned up and offering something to the town. Uh, these, these guys that Pete is helping to house and put back into work is, is a missing link in, in Maine's employment cycle right now. We have such a problem with addiction, drug abuse, and, uh, alcohol abuse, and this is really helping to rebuild guys' lives, and, and Pete has made a difference in a bunch of guys' lives, um, and it should continue. We, we really, um, keeping in line with, with the motto, you know, no backward steps. We're, we're really trying to move this facility forward. Thank you.
Excellent. Real quick, I didn't, did you get the address, his address?
Oh, sorry, 51 Carpenter Road in Poland Spring, Maine.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward? Okay, and just again, name, address, and five minutes.
Maureen O'Brien, 42 Winter Street. I'm just curious, um, is this a business or is this a housing program for residents with? for residents with drug issues? Have the neighbors been informed that this is a residential program or drug treatment center? I'm really confused about whether people are going to be living there, how many, what the nature of supervision, a lot of questions.
Yeah, it's a, it's a business approval that happens to employ people that are re-entering the workforce. Eight or fewer residents, and I understand there'll be significantly less than that. Mr. Bolduc could speak to that. Eight or fewer, we have to look at it as a single-family home. It's not a medical treatment facility. It's a business that happens to employ people in recovery.
Anyone else from the public would like to come forward? All right, seeing none, I'd seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, excellent. So any questions for staff? So that would have been a question, right, about the use of the residential building in terms of also probably doing double duty as a... Yeah, I don't even know the name of it. So, but you addressed it, so.
The only piece I think, so staff addressed whether or not it's a business or residential program. Staff stated it's a business, they happen to employ a particular type of employee. Some of those employees will be living there, but there are few enough of them living there that staff is, and the city is required to really view that as a single-family residence. Staff didn't answer, and maybe the applicant would answer this. In addition to that question about the residential use was, is this a, a drug treatment facility? And I'm assuming that's asking, are there beyond, you know, providing work and, and something to keep busy and earn a living? Is there any kind of medical treatment going on?
Not, not that we're aware of.
Is there a supervisor that would be living at the, in the home?
I think that might be something for the applicant, but it, it wasn't stated.
Peter Bolduc, 840 Bakers Town Road in Poland. We, to answer the question, this isn't a drug rehab facility. We don't offer medical help in, in any kind of way in that, in that regard. We work with men in recovery holistically. We work with them vocationally, we work with them through faith, housing in some instances. We have a partnership with a boarding house in Lewiston where a lot of our guys are at. This house is actually a place for guys that are stepping up to the next level, guys that have proven themselves, guys that have good sobriety and have a good footing underneath themselves. And typically, we don't have a supervisor in, in the standard sense of the word, but we have senior guys that have displayed leadership qualities and they're kind of like a house mother, if you will, someone that we, that we look to for that kind of leadership.
Thank you for adding that extra insight. I, I do believe just kind of from like a special exception standpoint, I'm not entirely sure. We might have gone off the beaten path with that, but that's fine. I think, you know, it was addressed from the public and we're addressing it here, but I think it's not really pertinent necessarily to this exception, so. All righty, so at this point in time, do we have conversation? Do we want to seek a motion?
I make a motion to approve the proposed recycling business with employee housing at 249 Merrill Road, parcel ID 186-012 pursuant to Chapter 60, Article 4, Division 15, Industrial District, Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 2, Site Plan Review, and Chapter 60, Article 16, Division 3, Special Exception with the following conditions: No development activity until any bonding or inspection fees are determined by the Auburn Engineering Department, if required; no development activity until all building permits are secured by code enforcement; and no cutting of existing buffer, buffer areas.
Okay, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will, all those in favor? All right, motion carries. Excellent. Okay, so the next item on the agenda, item number seven, so public hearing, realignment of Miller Street. So I do see that we have a staff packet on it. So staff, I'm not sure if you want to chat a little bit about it before we go to public hearing.
Are we ready to go? I missed the beginning there. This is a discontinuance of Miller Street and the relocation. Essentially, we, we've already talked about this a little bit at the last planning, planning board meeting. It was under, essentially our workshop. And then now this just kind of formalizes the approval to move on to, to council. It's really a formality to the planning board that we, that we look at this and, and approve it. There's some very specific procedures that we're going to follow through with the, with the council on this that includes three additional meetings with the council. But wanted to get, again, planning boards concurrents and then really reach out a little bit on the public notices, more than what's required under the state statute. Under the state statute, we really only have to notify in one, on one, you know, we're going to do two of these. We're going to do Chestnut and Miller. On Miller Street, we actually only are going to notify two folks. And on Chestnut, we're going to notify three. So we're, we kind of reached out a little more and, and just wanted to broaden our wings a little bit to get public awareness of these two projects. Miller Street is in, in conjunction with the redevelopment of 186 Main Street, as approved by the planning board back in, on June 6th of 2023. It's, it basically discontinues a section of the road and then realigns it and creates a new section of the road. And then basically what we want to do is just, we suggest that the planning board discuss the plan and the real, realignment and then recommend that the board forward a positive recommendation to council. This is a requirement under Section 46, 340, 374, that we need to provide a, you know, a motion or a recommendation to council. I've got, the plan is up here. We went over it, I guess, three times now at this point. But we just, I'm here for any kind of question or specifics that you guys have.
Yeah, I was going to share that. So we, we have kind of like reviewed this a couple of times. And I, I feel like, if memory serves me correct, that we were all pretty much in favor of it. You know, we said, we had some good dialogue and discussion. We talked about the impact of, you know, people in that area, apart from the greater good of like the community and, and what is happening with that. So any questions for staff before I open it up for public comment?
My only question is, where exactly is this in city council process? And I ask only to question whether the board wants to just forward this recommendation as is or if it's worthwhile saying, we recommend doing this if this facility is finally approved, only because I would hate to see a situation where we discontinue a street and then don't do the thing.
I think, I think this allows flexibility, even though if this project isn't, this allows the flexibility for a real, realignment and that future development. If we're looking at getting some hardscape in the back, that really, we really want to showcase the Intersgarden River and that connection to the river, to the use of, you know, a facility that, you know, might serve food or beverages or something like that and have that outdoor space. To really, to really get that, we need that, we need the additional land as approved. So I think the realignment, if, if it doesn't, if it falls apart because of finances or whatever, Evan, I think that's a great point. It still needs, I think this still needs to happen for, to be a viable site. Just like the, we're, we're doing the remediation on the site. I think regardless of, of, of if the, that particular developer moves the project forward, it still needs to be cleaned up to make it a viable site. So I, you know, it could be very conservative to do that, to add that caveat, but I, I truly believe that they need the additional space to make that site work as a viable site.
Yeah, what I was going to say, because I thought that was a very astute question that you had, Evan. And I was like, oh geez, you know, I think he's on to something. So I do appreciate that extra color as well, so. Okay, any other questions before I open it up for public comment? I'll just wait for the member to be seated. All right, so at this time, I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. So public comment is open. Feel free to come to the podium. Five minutes and state your name and address. All right, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Excellent. Okay, yeah, so I, I think John did a great job summarizing this, right? So we reviewed this a couple of times. Again, I think we've all felt like it was a positive forward, move forward. You know, Evan, you had a great question about, you know, do we kind of, you know, pause potentially depending upon city council? But I do like what you had said also, John, that it opens up for other future opportunities should, should the other opportunity not arise. So I guess I'll just pause and see if people have any questions, comments. If not, in your staff packet is a suggested motion you can review and, you know, potentially share.
I make a motion to provide a positive recommendation to discontinue 90.94 feet, 90.94 foot section of Miller Street and realign on 125.34 section, 34 foot section of Miller Street, more fully described in Exhibit A, an easement plan dated May 5th, 2023, as it applies to Title 23, Part 3, Chapter 3, Section 3026A, 1 through 6. I'm assuming that's of Maine State Statute, the way that's written, as required and applies. Other associated tasks included providing continuance of public utilities as Title 23, Part 3, Chapter 3, Section 3026A 6 and under Section of Maine State Statute and under Section 46-374 of the City of Auburn ordinance.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, do you have any discussion? Okay, seeing none, I will, all those in favor? All right, excellent, motion passes. Okay, so the next item is public hearing, the discontinuance of Chestnut Street. Again, this is really along the same lines of what we just did. We had a workshop on it. Again, we were all pretty much in favor of it, lots of dialogue and discussion. So I will hand it over to staff.
Yeah, so this is, again, this is a ditto on, on the last one. This particular project, we, under the state statute format, we would notify three people. Again, under our ordinance, we, we broaden that grip a little bit and we, you know, we reached out to 90-something folks and, and let them know about this project. Again, it's, it's the same, the same piece. We're looking to keep the, there's going to be public utilities involved in this project. And we're looking for providing those easements. Under the state statute, with the discontinuance, the, under the item six, if it's referenced, I'm pretty, pretty sure it's, and under Chapter 305, subsections 306, 30, 26A, 6, it keeps the utilities in place. So the building, as you guys have it in your plan, and I, and I added that because I, we left it out last time and I included it in your packet. But if you were looking at it, that, the utilities actually go through the building. And we're working on, the final one for city council, just for situational awareness, will, will not impact that water utility and the gas line that's going, it's currently going through that structure right now. If you're looking at a plan and had that question, it is being addressed under the design development and will be corrected when recorded in the registry. So just, just a note there, a little sidebar, but I'm open for any other questions.
Any questions for staff? All righty, seeing none, I would seek a motion to open up public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, excellent. So again, say your name, five minutes, and your address.
Maureen O'Brien, 42 Winter Street, Auburn. I am very, very concerned about the money that the City of Auburn wants to spend on this building. 8.6 million, really? With the high school, with the possible new public service building. We don't have a, a public pool. It's a duplication of what's already in the neighborhood. We have a daycare center that's at the former Webster School. We have an indoor basketball court down at Petengale. I've been in, in this neighborhood for 40 years. When I first moved there, there was a developmental preschool. Then when that closed, they were going to put in a police substation because we have a high crime level in our neighborhood. That never happened. We really don't need a glass building in that neighborhood. We have a lot of vandalism. Who's going to repair the glass walls that this building has? We don't even have, we've had, that street repaved several years ago. They put in these pink pads on all the curbs. They lasted for about a year before they were destroyed, destroyed by the sidewalk plows. We keep asking for them to be repaired or replaced. That never happens. The City of Auburn does not put money into maintenance. We, why are we doing this? Who is going to pay for this? We don't need it. We, we really need a lot of other things in Auburn. We don't need this. I think it's just, it's, the kids in Auburn have the Boys and Girls Club, they have the Y. We really could put some money into those programs before we do a new building. I really think that we really need to think about this. And I don't feel that the City of Auburn is really investing in the neighborhood. Do the street repairs, do the police calls, do the things that we need. We don't need this.
Okay, I just want to remind people to, and I see her coming forward. So the item on this agenda is discontinuing Chestnut Street and making, you know, realigning from a street perspective that area. This is not a referendum on the PALL Center. So I just want to make clear that absolutely want to hear comment about moving of the street. But I think, you know, maybe working with staff, city council, if you're not in favor of the PALL Center. Because the PALL Center is not in the purview of the planning board. I just want people to know that. Go ahead.
My name's Joe Maley, 82 Webster Street. Excuse me. I have to admit that I kind of got behind the eight ball on this issue. I have not been following it the way that I should have been, but I'm here tonight. I have several questions. First of all, I want to clarify, I am neither for or against this project as a whole right now, but I do have some questions at this, when I received a letter in the mail that came to my mind. May, and some of these questions, this may not be the format, and I apologize, without truly understanding what lies where. Question one, is this planned? Question one, is this planned facility just for youth? Or will it be for older folks? A couple of years ago, my neighbor, he had given me some prints that he got from the planning board, and this is not, what he showed me is anything but a neighborhood child recreation center. That was a full-blown arena. So, but again, is it for kids only? That may not be the format here. The second part of that question is, what is the actual expected usage? I've lived in this neighborhood for the better part of my life, both as a child and now a 30-year-old home buyer. What I've seen in this neighborhood is the population changes on a regular basis. So today, you may have 30 kids in the neighborhood, and in six months, you may have only 15. So the population fluctuates, which leads me back to the original question of, who is this really targeting? My big question, though, is why is it that we feel, have a feel or need to close Chestnut Street? It can't be for parking, for a basketball court for some kids. Years ago, EL used to practice football on that very field. They never closed Chestnut Street. They had plenty of parking. So why the need? Is it a safety issue that they wanna alleviate? I went to Webster School, and it was a school. Hundreds, if not thousands, of kids walked up and down Chestnut Street. Nobody ever got hit by a car. How many area businesses has this board granted the ability to close a street for their benefit? Supposedly, according to this map, this street closure would facilitate parking. There's a lot of businesses in Auburn that would love to have the ability to just tap their fingers and say, well, I wanna close this street. It'll enhance my business. So please consider that in your decision-making. Has there been any traffic studies on this? Anybody? Has anybody been out in that neighborhood? Does anybody seen the corner of Walnut and Webster Street in the wintertime, when there's enough snowbanks on either side, and you have onside street parking in the winter, where you can barely get one vehicle through? Now we wanna have more vehicle traffic? Does it make sense? Does not make sense tonight. If there hasn't been a traffic study, or an evaluation of how this will affect local traffic, that's wrong. You need to know, because most of the people that use Chestnut Street are local people. I use it all the time when I'm going to Center Street. Why? Because I don't wanna deal with the Hampshire Street traffic. Simple as that. Also, I wanna make you aware of that. When I bought the house in 93, one of the selling points was the dead-end situation. Why dead ends? Because it's quiet, I don't have the through traffic. This is gonna give me through traffic. It's gonna give me-
Thank you, sir. Your five minutes are up. I appreciate it. No, I appreciate it, thank you very much.
Okay, can I ask one more question? Will this, if this goes through, will the blocked-off part of Chestnut be accessible to the public to walk back and forth?
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else, any other members from the public? If anyone else would like to come forward, yep, absolutely, just come to the podium, state your name, your address, and you have five minutes.
My name is Judy Russo-Gagnon, and I live on 9 Walnut Street. So thank you for clarifying the reason why we're here, because I had a few other concerns and comments, but I'll just stick with the closing of-
Okay.
-Chestnut Street. Although the blueprint's difficult to read, that we got in the mail, and then we came and got a larger one from the city, it still was hard to decipher what was going on. It appears as though, with the small print that we could see, that Walnut Street would be an exit for the center. We don't agree with this and feel that it's a very poor plan. The increase in traffic will make this, make the street more dangerous than what it already is. The length of Walnut Street is 202 feet approximately, and it's 22 feet wide. The number of cars that speed on the street now is unbelievable. We have eight children who live on the street, and their ages from 2 to 12. It's not uncommon for us, when we're outside, to tell the speeders to slow down. There have been a few close calls when cars have gotten pretty close. I even purchased a caution "Children at Play" sign to put on the side of the road, hoping that the, the cars would slow down, and it is often ignored. There's a slight curve in the road from the center to, coming up to Walnut, to Walnut Street, and it's just enough of a curve with the brush that you can't see what's coming around the corner. So that makes it, that makes it even more dangerous. If the PAL Center activity is on Center Street, doesn't it make more sense to keep the traffic activity, the entrance and the exit on Chestnut and Webster Street? Once upon a time, Walnut Street was a dead end. Why can't we just go back to that? And I respectfully say that if you go ahead with the plan for Walnut Street to be an exit, if that's how I understand it, then, then I say that if our children are injured or worse, then the blood is, their blood is on the hands of the city. There's also a parking concern for those of us living on Walnut Street, with the road being 22 feet wide. How do you make the street wide enough for two lanes? And having parking on the road for those that live there? Chestnut Street is already two lanes, which would be conducive, I would think, for the traffic. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other members would like to come forward? Excellent.
My name's Russell Stewart. I live on 13 Walnut Street.
I'm sorry, can you repeat your name?
My name's Russell Stewart.
Thank you.
I live on 13 Walnut Street, on the corner where the PAL Center is. Yeah, I have eight kids at my house in the yard. Ball rolls out the road, car comes around that corner. They're not gonna see. Now you guys, or whoever, is planning to open that road up. It's bad enough the cars come around that corner, you can't see. They're gonna do a windmill, it's saying 15 miles an hour. That's still fast, think about it. You're on foot, kids out there, 15 miles an hour. Bam! You know? So every day, I have to babysit my kids on another road because of that corner. People just driving right through, speeding through, I mean, crazy. They're already trying to use it as a two-lane, which it isn't, it's not whiteout. Nobody can park on the side of the street, you're afraid your vehicle's gonna get wiped out. I've been there eight years. It's, since they paved that road, it's bad. I used to take my truck, dig up the road, put a speed bump there to slow people down. That worked. Then the city decided to spend money, paved it, and now people just, phew, right through the road. I got eight kids, I don't wanna be there, be one of those parents outside, looking at their child on that road. You know what I mean? I think we should just keep it a dead end. It's a small street, everybody knows everybody there. That's all I got to say, thanks.
Thank you. Any other members? Okay, seeing none, I will seek a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, so at this point in time, we have some new faces, right, from the public? So we will address, I think you saw us writing down questions. So we did write down your questions, and we will address and have conversation with staff about it. Again, this is not about the PAL Center. After, we're more than happy to help redirect if you have questions about the PAL Center. This is truly about the discontinuance and realignment of the road. So I'll open it up to the board and see who would like to start first with questions.
The question, has there been any traffic studies on this?
So there, there hasn't, we, we've looked at some traffic information. Really, we, we're gonna address traffic when we come in for site plan review. They'll do a full traffic study at that point. I think that, I think it's important, though, to get the public comments now, and we can incorporate that into, into the design of the PAL Center. I'm hearing, you know, we're certainly hearing the concerns on Walnut Street in the, the speed of traffic and, and things like that, and parking. And I think all of that will be addressed in the site plan review under, under the, you know, under, under the purview of the planning board. We, we will really take a deep delve into that at that point.
The same gentleman asked if that area that is being discontinued will have public access to pedestrians.
Yes, it's still, there'll still be public access for pedestrians to walk through there, that'll be correct, or bike, pedal bike through there. That would be, that would be appropriate as well.
Non-motorized access, we could say.
No motorized access through there. It's really a safety issue. You know, the, the thought is, is that we're gonna concentrate kids with the, with the facility. It is based for youth. PAL stands for Police Athletic League. It's really about sports, bringing kids in and doing constructive things, doing, during that, essentially during that critical time between 2:00 and, say, 6:00 PM, where parents might be still working, and giving them a real structured environment. And that structured environment is, is, could be playing sports, it could be doing an activity in the building. And that really lessens the amount of police calls, lessens the vandalism in the community, and really helps out this, these kids who necessar, might not necessarily have a place to go, have a great place to go, and have a great experience through, you know, utilizing the fields, the foosball courts, the, the basketball courts, the, the football field in the back. We're really looking to grow that area as well, the outdoor activities in, in those areas. They've already has a new footsall court, which has just been built, probably within the last two years. That's a, basically a soccer game where you play on a, a hard court, and it takes a smaller field, and really, anybody can play the game. So, you know, that's just one example of, of, you know, good things happening in that area. And I'll just go down through some of these questions. You know, the, we, someone asked about the money. There's been a $3 million allocation.
I, I appreciate you seeking to answer that question at this time. Cost of project is not even within the purview of the planning board if it comes to us for site plan review. So I, I would, I would say to that community member that that's a question that we really can't answer, and that's a, a question and a concern that should be addressed directly to the city council, who does make that decision. There was a question, why do we need to close Chestnut?
Yeah, I got that one, too.
What is the need?
So it's, it's really, it's, it's about safety. That's the, that's the pointed point here. In addition, there, there will be an expansion of potential land and water conservation fund land that will be leveraged for additional projects in the future. Those, those projects aren't 100% vetted yet, but we, we've got a site visit with the state coming up here in the next month, where we're gonna really entertain some additional projects, leveraging land and water conservation funds to include, which could be some type of ball field, could be a, a garden area. There could be a whole varied list of things that we could leverage, federal funds, and expanding our, you know, the park in that area.
All right, any other questions that folks received from the public that you'd like to address?
Like Evan said, I think some of the rest of the comments or questions might be better answered during a site review of that project.
Yep, perfect.
I think there is one question, a set of questions that was germane to this. Currently, Walnut Street connects to the parking lot at the current PAL Center? Yeah?
That's correct.
And so, the question, the question was, would Walnut Street be an exit for the PAL Center? But I guess the, excuse me for putting words in someone's mouth, but perhaps they're asking, would Walnut Street continue to be an exit for the PAL Center as it currently exists, or in a future iteration? Given, given that Chestnut is being closed?
It, it could be one of many. You know, the, the total plan includes development of seven Chestnut, and there'll be outlets there potentially in the future. In addition, there's parking on the other side of Chestnut, so there could be outlets as well on, on the other side of Chestnut Street. So that's, it's not the only one. There's probably gonna be, at the end of the day, when, when the site is fully developed, there could be four or five. And I think that as we look at that development through site plan review, those, those need to be considered as future outlets, and how that's gonna affect or improve traffic.
Hey, good discussion. So any more discussion? If not, I would seek a motion.
I make a motion to provide a positive recommendation to discontinue 252 and a half feet of section of Chestnut Street, which more fully described in Exhibit B, an easement conveyances and partial discontinuance plan dated August 31st, 2023, as it applies to Title 23, Part 3, Chapter 304, 3026A, 1-6, as required and applies. Other associated tasks, including providing continuance of public utilities as Title 23, Part 3, Chapter 304, 3026A 6, and under Section 46-374 of the City of Auburn ordinance.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion of the motion? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, the next item on the agenda is an extension. So what I would like to hear from staff, from your staff report, is the extension for the approval of the warehouse project loaded, located at 11145 Center Street.
Okay, this next item is, I think you said, the extension of 11145 Center Street. I'm gonna just hold this up real quick. So we reviewed this project last year. The project was for a warehouse on Center Street, 1145. And, thank you. And so, August 9th is when we, is when the planning board initially accepted this project. They, the applicant, Business Real Estate LLC, is requesting a one-year extension on the approval for this project because the building material- because the building materials have been too expensive. It's been quite prohibitive, according to the letter that they, that they wrote. So they are requesting that one-year extension. Staff believes that, that this is a reasonable request, given the, the pretty extreme circumstances of recent building developments, and this is a pretty small project, and they do intend to continue in the next year, anticipating, hoping that the building costs will go down. And we believe that it meets the provisions of the ordinance. They have asked in the correct amount of time. And we, as staff, recommend that the board approves a year-long extension for this project.
I apologize, I, I have two sort of briefcase-type things I bring to this, and I left my Chapter 60 and the other. What's the language specific to granting extensions? It's fine if other people want to continue while staff is finding that.
Are there conditions to grant exceptions, is that your question?
Is it, is your, is the intent of that because material costs being the reason it didn't happen, or it's not covered as a reason to extend it, or?
Yeah, I guess that's, that's my question. I just sort of, I'm a little concerned at the idea that it's because the unusually prohibitive materials costs and interest rates, which I understand, being a homeowner wanting to do some things around my own house, that's, makes sense. But the applicant has intention of completing the project when the economic conditions improve, but we only provide it one 12-month extension.
Yeah, we may want to revisit that because it seems we're getting more and more of these project delays. We may want to revisit the ordinance itself, but right now, the ordinance says, "Approval of site plan shall expire one year after the date of approval, unless building permits have been obtained to begin construction in accordance with the approved site plan." It has some language about delays related to litigation, but then it goes on to say, "A single one-year extension may be given upon a showing of good cause in writing by the applicant to the planning board, not less than 30 days before the expiration of approval of the existing plan."
Yeah, so good, good cause is pretty general.
It is very general.
Thank you.
And the staff, so that the, them sending the request at the date they did, met that?
It did, yeah.
Yep.
But we are seeing financing and construction costs delay a lot of projects, and it may be worth revisiting if you don't want to see these every 12 months.
Well, we can only grant one 12-month extension, correct? So the applicant can't come back again and ask us?
Correct, yeah, that's correct. What I'm suggesting is maybe we should do a two-year approval instead of a one-year out of the gate, given that a lot of projects are delayed beyond 12 months.
What exactly is the hope? Because I, costs don't usually go down.
Yeah, their hope is that they have a lease agreement and numbers that work within the next 12 months to build what was already approved. I don't see the numbers going down, but maybe they can control their costs in some or other way with financing or interest rates or things like that.
Is the applicant aware that it would be only be, that they'd only get this one-year extension?
So the other, I guess just to add to that conversation a little bit, you know, during the, so if they get the building permit, they're good, right? So they can, they're locked in, but what's happening is, this is going to planning board, it's getting approved, and then they come to build a building based on the site design or based on the construction type, the materials. It's, it's over budget. And then the financing goes up, and then it becomes over budget. So that, that's kind of the, you know, the value engineering piece of this, the back and forth between the developer, the banks, and the contractors, and the designers sometimes takes over a year. And I think that's part of our challenge with this one-year extension piece that Eric's referencing. All this stuff has to happen. The city's working on it, too. I mean, we're, we're working on it with all the projects that we're, we're working on, and it's, it's a challenge to get, to punch a project through based on, on costs and site design challenges and, and design challenges and everything in between. So I just, sometimes even gets, things get caught up in the fire marshal's office longer than we anticipate for a lot of projects, and, and it's hard to punch that through in a one-year timeframe.
Okay, what I'm hearing is that it sounds like staff would like to present information to the board, maybe at a future date, about the possibility of doing this, to see if that's something we want to move forward. It's a frustration you're having, but it's not necessarily specific to our approval of this particular extension request?
Yeah, that's correct. And, you know, for solar projects, we've got the interconnection agreement and that whole network of, of bringing that power from AC power to DC power and putting it back on the grid. That time, that's, that takes a long time sometimes. It, it changes, you know, locations and it just adds a lot of time. That's just one specific example where things might take a little bit longer.
So this is a precedent thing, too, which is kind of, obviously, this is a tough, particular time to deal with this, but we're also, by granting this, we'd be setting a precedent that this is a reasonable thing to do because it's probably going to happen again soon.
Yeah, I can't think of an instance where we've denied an extension in the past either. If it's a project that was approved 12 months earlier.
Hey, any other questions? So at this moment, we can have discussion, dialogue, or I would seek a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve a one-year extension until August 9th, 2024, or be granted to Business Real Estate LLC under Section 60-1308. All conditions of the letter of approval sent on August 9th, 2022 apply.
All right, do you have a second?
Second.
Do you have any discussion? Okay.
My only question, this is not a public hearing, correct?
I didn't see it on the.
Okay, I just didn't know. Sometimes that doesn't make it on there, and I want to make sure we.
You know me, I checked it. All right, any discussion? I had just quickly stepped out. Was there anything in the regulations about the, no? All right, all those in favor? Okay, motion carries. All right, so at this point in time, we have two workshops. So I will hand over the workshop zoning map amendment, Area B.
Thank you. So this workshop is because we, is a continuation of when we had a public hearing about the five areas to be rezoned from their existing zoning district to T-4.2B. We initially, last time, I think it was in July, we presented a map that connected the old, or the prior Area B, which included the Vickery Road Carrier Court neighborhood to Area A1, which was South Main Street and along Vickery, and then down along Broad Street. The board decided that they didn't want to see that zone, that connection be 700 feet from the center of the road and what resembled a strip zone. Staff had just picked that because we thought that it was the closest to, to what we thought the board may have been asking for. So today, we have come with the, with the board's two requests for new maps to consider for next month. And what we're doing here is just to decide which option you like better, or if you would like us to do something else entirely. Option one was to extend the zoning change past that 700-foot from Vickery Road mark to the zoning, to the bottom of what is currently the Low Density Country Residential Zone and split across one parcel over to the Turnpike. And option two is extending that T-4.2B zone down past the Low Density Country Residential Zone and past some of the rural residential zone, ending at the Turnpike and where South Main Street intersect. So one thing to consider is that the comprehensive plan recommends that this be a kind of a suburban development district, so it recommends some growth, but maybe not to this extent in terms of T-4.2B required allows for higher density. Comprehensive plan recommends some higher density, but, but maybe not to this level. So we can talk a little bit about that and what makes sense to you all. But these are the two maps that we have with us today, that we can move forward with or not.
I guess my question for staff would be, if not T-4.2B, what would be the next closest zone? Not necessarily next close zone to T-4.2B, but what would be the zone that most closely represents the description in the comp plan?
Yeah, I think if you were to choose option one, that's probably a good compromise for the end of T-4.2B, and then we could work on creating a zone that would hit that eight-unit-per-acre density. We really don't have that right now, but I think, given that's sort of the next tier of zoning changes as you move away from the core of the city, I think that's something we're going to have to develop if we're going to move away from the traditional zoning district. I guess you could use.
What's the density in T-4.1?
T-4.1 doesn't give an exact maximum, but the form will, wait a minute. T-4, T-4.2 doesn't give an exact maximum. I don't think T-4.1 does either, but it's a slightly lower density. It's really geared towards Main Street as the traditional neighborhood. Maybe that's appropriate, we'd want to look at that, but it's a, it's a very specific style of building that matches the architecture on Main Street.
The 4.1 you were asking about? So the, the profile, the difference between 4.2B and 4.1 is really, is the stories. So it's, it's two and a half versus three and a half. That's, that's the limiting factor, really, that other than that, the standard.
There's some setback from the public way and so on and so forth as well.
Yep, but for the most part, the biggest, the biggest takeaway is, is the stories. It goes from three and a half to two and a half.
Then the setbacks remain the same?
It's relatively close. But again, that's something that we could, you could, we could massage as well, but it's, it's close and the density is lessened a little bit. Maybe it's 60%, I don't, are you reading it?
I am. Usable, building lot coverage, yeah, so the lot coverage is the same, 60% maximum. Usable open space is 20% minimum. Building, building, frontage buildout is a little bit less, but we cha, but we recommended to change that last time with T-4.2B in the text. Same lot size, slightly larger minimum setbacks from the front of the lot, and that's.
But not enough to create a density as low as a unit per acre as recommended by the comprehensive plan?
No, it's certainly higher.
Do either of these options, and I know we pushed you for them, and I know I'm specifically one of the people that did push you for them, knowing that they did conflict with the comprehensive plan when I asked her to do this? I think the board needs to understand the implications of doing something that is in conflict with the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, there's, there really, if, if we were to push this out, technically, there would, there should be an amendment to the comp plan. And that, you know, that's really the biggest thing that, as staff, that we're wrestling with in trying to address this. But the, kind of the, the silver lining to that, though, is that we heard about Vickery Road today and utility expansion in this area, and that would support a higher density. So if we're moving forward with that utility upgrade in those areas, this would be prime for a comprehensive plan update, plan use update map. If this infrastructure was to move forward, I think that would support that. If not, then, then it's hard to, with a straight face, say that this is going to be supported. But, but it, it sounds like we've got some traction, we're looking for money, and, and the designs are moving forward, and we've got support from the water district and the sewer district on that, so.
And the, the comp plan boundaries are not exact, they're general land use patterns. And I think there's the logic to extending that along Vickery to the rear parcel lines with frontage on Vickery to make that connection. I don't think it's completely out of, out of line with the comp plan for you to do that. I think it's pushing it if you go all the way south with the, to the intersection of South Main and.
You think option one is less in conflict?
I think option, there's a lot of reasons why you would extend that, to not have the strip form and to take advantage of the utilities. Option one could do that, and we could bring back a district to you that would achieve that lower eight-unit-per-acre density if you wanted to, for continued, continued discussion.
We do have transacts three, two, one, and zero still, so.
There's a large area of that suburban designation in the comp plan that we really, that's some of the things we're going to have to work on next.
I feel like sticking with the comp plan and leaning towards option one is more cumulative to our overall goal.
Yeah, I very much push for option two. I would love to see option two discussed. I would, unless we're also going to engage in a comprehensive plan review, revision process at the same time, I, while I prefer this, I'm not sure. Without, without doing so with the comp plan, we can't do what I want, what I think would be most appropriate anyway. So I guess that's me saying, I would still like us to be discussing this so that this doesn't go away. I would like to see this as one of the options. I'd like it to see it discussed. As to why this is, is not the best option, however, it does create some of the infill we want, so that way we can continue to move that forward and discuss it in public. But I agree with Amanda that I think really the only option that's available to us, given the, the fact that we really can't contradict the comp plan, is option one.
I agree. I think the, the second option with the physical boundaries that are there makes more sense, but to not conflict with the plan, option one.
I saw some heads nodding over there, Tim. Yep, Darren, heads nodding, yep.
I agree with Riley completely. The land features and the layout for option two is what I would prefer, but given the steps to go through to do that would be a challenge. It would probably start with baby steps.
So staff, do you have what you need from us?
We'll prep option one for public hearing for next month, unless anybody objects.
Can we keep both options open for public comment?
We can, but we would definitely recommend a comp plan amendment to go with option two. Or some combination where we apply an eight-unit-per-acre density to the remainder of that area beyond what option one already changes to T-4.2B.
So what are your thoughts about putting two out there for the public?
I don't, I would, I would just go against that. I think it's.
You what, I'm sorry?
I think that would complicate things more than.
I agree.
We've already had several meetings on this to incorporate something that would potentially conflict with the comprehensive plan, would bring more dissent, I believe, on the plan.
And I think we need to look at that a little closer, anyway, and spend a little bit more time on that other area, included in option two.
Would you have what you need to create verbiage to amend the comp plan to go along with this?
We could. I don't know if we would have it in time for the October meeting with everything else that'll be. We're expecting to have the Lake Auburn watershed items in October as well.
I, correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm hearing you say is that you would like to continue discussing this and adding it in as a way to continue discussing it? Yeah? I wholeheartedly agree that I want to continue discussing this, and if staff feels it. Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree that I wanna continue discussing this, and if staff feels that it works best for them to actually take it out, like, I absolutely understand the argument that Riley's making. Um, and, and that Stacy reiterated, reiterated, um. But, the, I think there's enough, there are enough members on the planning board that would at least like to see what the process would have to be to make that move forward, that um, if it's not gonna be included in the, the staff packet, that uh, sometime in the next month or two, we'd be given at least a mini workshop on what it would take, what that means, what a comp plan review looks like.
You mean option two, so you're talking about.
Right, option two, uh, if not a comp plan, uh, amendment, what it looks like to create a new zone, so on and so forth.
I think that new zone would apply much more broadly as well, or could, under the comp plan, so. I think there's more to gain by.
I think we need a zone that accomplishes that because, yeah, as you said, there are other areas in the city that need, that would benefit, yeah.
If we did option one for public hearing in October, and then either October or November had a new zone for you to look at that achieved the eight units per acre, that could apply more broadly. If that would work, that's, that's workable, I just can't promise for October, comp plan amendment and everything.
Uh, I don't know how everyone else feels, but, I mean, I understand if October's not gonna work, November works, but I would like to see, I'd like to see that.
I'd very much like to see that too.
Yeah, and just to note, that doesn't require at eight units per acre, that does not require any kind of amendment to the comp plan. It's already supported in the comp plan, so we could, we could certainly move forward with that, so.
It would be that next transect as you move away from the urban core, um, but still a water and sewer'd transect at eight units per acre.
Okay, are we good? Okay, so I think we can move on to the last working item, which is the workshop for the minimum dwelling size.
So, uh, the planning board challenged me a little bit last time, um, so, and I, and, uh, it really opened up uh, some, just some information about, um, really, they want, we wanted to learn a little bit about tiny homes. I provided that information in there, state statutes, guidance from the state fire marshal on how it's defined. And, and they real, there's two separate, um, ways that they look at that. Um, if it's on a foundation, then it falls under the MUBEC rules, under the IRC, IRC, under chapter five for tiny homes. If it, if it's on an axle, then it falls under the ANSI, uh, A one one nine rules. And again, the maximum size is four hundred feet. So we, we learned a little bit about that, and then the density, um, there was a question about that. But, uh, the density obviously still remains the same regardless, right? It's all dependent upon the existing zone, but could see an increase as LD two thousand and three and then further described in seven, LD seventeen oh six, and then further described under chapter five, which dictates the adopted language, uh, for the hundred and ninety-one square feet. Um, that's the minimum size that they're suggesting under the new LD two thousand and three, so it's hundred and ninety-one square feet is the minimum size, so that's the, that's what the square footage that we're actually considering for this text change, but let me back up a bit and, and point out that the banks, there was a question about banks, and we, we really dived into the bank issue. Banks aren't touch, touching any kind of financing or mortgages for anything less than five hundred square feet. But as of January one, twenty twenty-four, the standard for a home will be a hundred and ninety-one square feet. Regardless of what the planning board decides to do, it'll be, will be forced to allow homes down to one ninety-one. It will be a buyer beware for that hundred and ninety-one square feet between, between one ninety-one and five hundred that banks probably won't touch them, particularly under the main state housing program. Um, so, we did, yeah, we did a lot of investigation, it was really fun, I had, I talked to, um, some, uh, bank CFOs and CO, and, um, top of the bank and the top of the commercial banking, um, and then main state housing. So they package these loans, to, um, the, the banks do the loans and then they package them and they sell them essentially on Wall Street, and they don't, they don't, they don't package those loans unless under Fannie Mae or Fannie Mac, they don't package them unless they're five hundred square feet, so that's, that's kind of an interesting caveat. So we kicked it back to the state, hey, what about this one ninety-one, they're like, well, we're not taking any stance on the below grade or above grade, and we're suggesting as staff that we should really not consider the, the, um, anything below grade. And we, we looked at, we talked to some appraisers, that was another question, we had lots of questions about the appraisal. And certainly that the appraisal, the square footage isn't counted, but if the space is, is is, um, completed and it's, you know, you've got a good living space there, it adds value, but the square footage doesn't occur on, say, the assessor's records or the, in the appraisal, so the square footage is just the top amount. So we, we covered, we covered a lot of different topics, uh, we learned a lot. Um, and I'm, I'm saying that I think the planning board did a great job asking these questions and having us try to figure this stuff out. And, but we're suggesting one ninety-one above grade is, is the new recommended square footage based on the, on the new language that's coming out under the chapter five. Um, and I think I highlighted that in your packet. Um, and we're suggesting, again, above, above grave at a hundred and ninety square feet, so that's how the language reads.
So density's probably gonna have to change on how it's defined, not by dwellings, by like, how many bedrooms are on the lot, or how many?
No, so de- density's still the same, density is based on what the underlying zone is. And then by right, as of January first, twenty twenty-four, vacant lots will have the ability to have up to uh, four units, four units per acre, it would be the minimum lot size, uh, m- minimum dwelling unit size. Um, if it's a single dwelling and they have four units, you know, they're still gonna have the, the fire marshal, they're still, you know, they're still gonna have to sprinkle the building, all that stuff will still apply. If they have standalone units, they're gonna have to meet setback requirements from one another under the fire, fire marshal's code, uh, which I think is five or ten feet, I'm not gonna rattle that stuff off the top of my head, but. And then the setback requirements was still would have to apply, and the parking requirements would still have to apply on that particular lot. So, um, but I think that kind of, that kind of moving away from our discussion of what, what should be the minimum square footage. And again, I'm going back to what's suggested under, what originally was LD two thousand and three further described in seventeen oh six, and then further described into chapter five by DECD. So, um, that, that's where we, we've landed.
Okay, thoughts for staff?
That's not, not a thought, just a general question, I guess, the, wouldn't the people who are building or potentially buying those homes already know the financial restrictions of the banks before going into?
Yeah, they would find out, and, but I, I can say that the, um, the main state housing is, they're considering this. They know that this is coming down the pike and they may change their rules and their lending practices. Uh, but that's a bigger discussion for the banks and how that works with Fannie Mae and Fannie Mac and the, and the packaging of that stuff you know, on Wall Street essentially, and those go back to, you know, like a conversation that I had in grad school about the, you know, the the packaging of the bo- the bonds and how that stuff's all wrapped together and on Wall Street, it's very, very technical and that stuff would, could take some time, um, but it's, uh, it's certainly not, it's not out of the realm that they would change those standards from five hundred to one ninety.
There, there may be ways to finance those under a commercial loan too, just not a traditional mortgage if you're doing five or more. As a multifamily maybe financed, it's not as good an interest rate, but it might be another option at certain banks.
Yeah, and I think that's a great point, um, you know, one pro, one point that was brought up is that home equity in, in the existing home, right, and then they wanna do the ADU, a smaller ADU, they take out a home equity loan to build that structure. And it's all really financed under the primary structure, but it's supporting the construction of another home, that, that was an example that was given to me by a banker.
I like curiosity.
Yeah, my only concern with this is that it would seem to me to encourage the smallest lot possible. Um, w- w- we'll use T four two B, for instance, because that's been discussed. Uh, if I remember correctly, is a minimum lot width of something like twenty-four feet with a minimum building width of fourteen? Okay, um. If someone's gonna put a seven hundred square foot home on that lot, I mean, you can't put it on a twenty-four by twenty-four foot lot if it's a single story home, there, there are certain implications of having a particular size home. Um, that doesn't mean I'm not in favor of reducing the, the size, I just worry about the implications with regard to density, lots, if you are putting more than one of these on a, a lot, that seems reasonable, you're also talking about a structure that's actually fairly easily removed because of its size, I mean, it's one could remove one of these and, and not be cost prohibitive. But what we've created is the ability to actually have we, we encourage the minimum lot size, the minimum lot size existed because we had lots like this and we're trying to create conformity. Uh, I, I, I just worry, wh- wh- what does that mean when you've got someone who, uh, subdivides a property to create a, a bunch of these smaller lots to put these homes on? Perhaps they're a cash buyer, perhaps they're paying in cash. Um. If these things can't be financed, who's purchasing them? Certainly only people paying in cash. Uh, the, the whole point of our housing initiative in the city is two-pronged, it's one, to provide housing, but two, to provide access to equity and ownership. This, on the face of it, looks like access to equity and ownership until you realize what we've done is made it less expensive for someone to create a single family home to rent out, but or someone that would be entering that, the, the market can't actually purchase because they can't get financing. It, it just seems sort of contrary, I guess, to go all the way down to one ninety-six because of that. The five hundred you could absolutely sell me on, you could sell me probably on three fifty. One, under two hundred, I'm saying, it's just.
How much do these homes go for?
I, yeah, I don't have a, I don't have an answer, I don't, um.
They're between forty and eighty grand, I can tell you, cause I was into them for a while.
It's essentially a tiny home at the end of the day, it's, and, and they can be built by right, right now. We're, so we're talking about things that we really they, they, by right at state, at the state law, I don't, you know, they could be built today, those tiny homes between the four hundred and one ninety-one. Um, and it could be built on a foundation, it would have to be built to code, um, so we're just establishing a number that matches what the state, what the state law is gonna be, um, but it is a buyer beware at five hundred square feet, and I, I see what you're saying, Evan. And, but we have to remember one thing that the underlying zone is, still has to be conformed with. You made a point about density and, and worried about the minimum lot size. They, they still have to, you know, if we're looking at four point two B, they still have to meet the sixty percent, the setback. All that stuff still needs to apply, um, and if they have multiple homes, then they've gotta, you know, build the accessways and the walkways and the, and the.
I hear you, it's a lot easier to do that in one ninety-six, a hundred and ninety-six square feet, and I guess, I'm not upset with staff. I'm also kind of annoyed that the staff is, that the state sort of just like foisted this upon us and says regardless, it doesn't matter what, what sort of planning you have, it doesn't matter what sort of, uh, uh, goals you, you, you're trying to create, you know, tough cookies, like, these things are going in.
Yeah, and I included in the packet and they, they didn't even define where the one ninety came from. It could be the basement and the above grade, they're like, it's up to the municipalities to decide that, so. I went with the more conservative above grade, uh, note on that one, but knowing the feeling that, that the planning board would have and just understanding the, the implications of financing something between one ninety and five hundred could be, could be complicated on the, on this first go around within the first year or so before the banks catch up to this, but again, we don't, we're not seeing a big lift through the tiny home provision, which has been in place now for over a year. Um, it hasn't really created a lot of, we haven't seen a lot of reaction and need for it in, in our community, I think we only have, what, one or two? Yeah, handful, there's not a lot, so I don't suspect a lot of people are gonna be urged to build a house between one ninety and five hundred square feet.
And we have to allow it between one ninety-one and four hundred. Uh, I think what we're talking about is that gap that we have between four hundred and seven hundred right now is where they haven't taken away that local control.
So the, the state's mandating that we have the one ninety-one footprint?
Well, tiny homes are already allowed, homes smaller than four hundred square feet. Now they'll be creating this bottom end one ninety-one that doesn't exist until recently or not yet.
So we're gonna get to the point where the financial aspect of it is really irrelevant, if the state's mandating it, the state's mandating it.
It's up to the person building it, if they can finance it or.
I don't know if it's a mandate per se, I think it's in allowable.
The mandate is that we must allow it.
Yeah, I don't, cause we didn't originally have the one ninety-one square foot minimum in the tiny home legislation, did we? And we have to allow homes smaller than four hundred square feet that meet the definition of a tiny home.
I'm just getting at, I'm hearing two, two different things, I'm hearing that these, the LD that's coming down the pike is going to basically tell us, it might not be in your, your provisions now, but if somebody wants to, they say, says you have to. Well, then if it's being mandated, the financial discussion is really moot.
I think, I think that's accurate, as it has been with tiny homes for the last year or a little more.
I, I, I guess my feeling is I understand that it's allowed by the state, but just cause the state allows that, if I, I just don't think that that's, I don't think this, that's what we should be doing. And, uh, you know, if, if staff wants to sell me on closing the gap down to four hundred, okay, that's fine with the understanding that the tiny house provision exists at the state. That's a state provision, it's not a local provision. Um, like, I'm fine, I'm fine with that, right? Uh, I don't think that, I don't think you should be able to put a permanent structure that's a hundred and ninety-six square feet anywhere and call it a primary residence, so this is just my personal opinion. Um, I, I, I've got some reasons for that, and so you, you were never convinced, gonna convince me to condone that even if the state's already like, you know, telling us we have to do it, so that's just sort of where I'm at.
As much as it pains me, I agree with him.
Yeah, and that, that's fine, we just wouldn't be in compliance with state statute and that, you know, that's the board's decision on that.
We would be in compliance with the state statute because we wouldn't not be allowing those, they're allowed by rule under state law. The state doesn't say we have to enact an ordinance that allows them, the state says they are allowed. This is not like LD two thousand and three where the state said the city must enact an ordinance that allows the following.
It says they're allowed.
It just says they're allowed, this is, this is different wording. We're not out of compliance by not going to the minimum square footage allowed for a tiny home.
Would this be something that we checked with legal on?
We certainly can, but my understanding is that the state law allows for tiny homes, so if we allowed our single families that are not tiny homes from four hundred to whatever the top is that somebody wants to build, we're still allowing for homes smaller than four hundred square feet, but they have to meet the additional definitions of being a tiny home. Which may be less permanent, like you're saying, then.
Again, the, 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 uh. Again, the, 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 uh, under LD 2003, they, they reg, they wrote, wrote the, um, the standards. Um, they, they refer to them as something different, but um, basically, these are the, um, ordinance rules. And they have very specific language, and I'll read it just, just so you know, and it's the same language that we're, that staff is recommending. An accessory dwelling unit must be at least 190 square feet in size unless the technical building code and standards boards pursuant to 10 MRS subsection 9722 adopts a different minimum standard. If so, that standard will apply. So, I mean, it's giving us how to build it, the, the square footage.
For an accessory unit, not a primary dwelling.
So that's, okay, that, that's the A, and then B, municipalities may set a maximum size for accessory dwelling units in local ordinances as long as the accessory dwelling units are not less than 190 square feet.
100% agree that that's what that says about accessory dwelling units, not, not primary dwelling units. Because what we're talking about is primary dwelling units. We're not talking about accessory dwelling units. If, if, if staff's, if staff's, uh, uh, desire is to have us do this specific to accessory dwelling units, I've got no problem defining language for accessory dwelling units that is, allows for a smaller size than a primary dwelling unit. An accessory dwelling unit is fundamentally different, you know, as evidenced by the word accessory, right, as opposed to primary, so.
And what, what I'm saying is we have to allow tiny homes less than 400 square feet as primary or accessory units.
Per state law, yep.
Yep.
And they would have to meet the definition of a tiny home.
Yep, which is a little more limiting than. What do you want, then, for next month? Do you want a 400 square foot minimum for single-family homes that are not tiny homes? Or do you want to keep the 700, we'll leave it as is? Or something in between?
I think closing the gap from the 4 to 700 gap would be a good move, but if we, if we only specifically assign that to single family dwelling units and don't specify anything about tiny homes, then wouldn't be disallowing it, so it wouldn't be in conflict with the state. But like Evan said, it wouldn't be a an encouraged part of the.
Yeah, and that's, and that's fine, but there'll always be a workaround. Um, and our ordinance will always be, um, at odds with, with state law. It'll be, it'll be always a question that code enforcement will have to answer. It's just, it's just the way that they build it. And it's a reference to a chapter under the standard of construction, but it, it will be allowed, no matter what.
Let's just say we won't not be in conformance. It'll absolutely be allowed. They're just going to have to follow those codes. But that's, that doesn't mean we're not in conformance with state. We would be not in conformance with state if we said it's not allowed.
But do you agree about the closing the gap, the 400 to 700 foot, square foot gap?
I like what Amanda brought up about how legal would interpret all that. Is that something I'm sure we could ask them, correct?
Yeah, we certainly can. I think we have that with the opinion from, um, the fire marshal's office. I mean, you can build a home to the building code of less than 400 square feet, and it's a tiny home. And we're talking about allowing a home from 400 up as a single-family home. You'll be able to build the whole gamut. We just won't be blessing the tiny home legislation, I guess.
Okay, do you have what you need?
If we prep for 400 square foot minimum, sure.
How do people feel about that?
So there'll be a, a distinguish between an accessory dwelling unit and the primary home.
That's my understanding.
That's a key part of the puzzle.
Okay, all right. Any more questions from staff? I just want to make sure you have what you need.
I get, we get what we need.
Okay, all right, so the next item is public comment.
Stephen Beal, 575 Johnson Road, I just have a very brief, uh, comment, uh, trying to make matters more clearly understood by the public and as an aid to the planning board and the staff. Uh, the, probably the matters that come before you most frequently, although not on tonight's agenda, are proposed zoning amendments, either to the map or to text. Those are before you all the time. There are three ways that those amendments can get here, either by petition, by directive from the city council, or by the planning board's own origination. At present, the way that the agendas are lined up, you can't tell how such a matter gets here. Sometimes you end into, uh, end up in neighborhood squabbles, for example, the 37 Loring Avenue matter, which was before the council one night uh, for one zoning change, and then was before the planning board the next night because it was in a T42B proposed zoning change. Uh, it would be very helpful if, for example, a matter that came before the board uh, by petition is one that can't be ignored. You can't put that off. You have to have a hearing within 45 days. Similarly, sometimes the agenda items just appear without any designation, whether it was from the council or by the board's own origination, and you have to go back and look at the minutes of both the planning board and the council from the previous two or three months, and sometimes those are that far behind in typing in order to see how a matter originated. I think it would be just generally helpful and speed the process if there was a parenthetical behind every map or text proposed amendment that simply said parentheses, petition, uh, council origination, or planning board origination.
Okay, thank you. Catherine took note of that. All right, um, next item is miscellaneous. Any upcoming agenda items?
I think we mentioned one, the Lake Auburn watershed boundary changes at Grace Lawn, as well as the text amendments. Um, those are going back to the ad hoc committee that's made up of staff uh, and elected officials from both the cities of Lewiston, uh, city of Auburn, and, uh, one from Turner. Um, it looks like we're close to consensus on those. A couple of questions answered on the 26th, and we'll prep those for public hearing on October 10th, hopefully, if everything goes well on the 26th.
Are you talking about all of the amendments that um, had previously been discussed? I know they talked about sending some back that had already been approved.
Yeah, all of the amendments that have previously been discussed, a couple that were um, initiated by council but have not been discussed by this board. Um, and we'll, we will not be bringing back anything that went to the council and received final approval, and the big one was the phosphorus ordinance change, but our legal counsel is suggesting that because there are additional changes to chapters that the board already made recommendations on, that you look at all of them in a single document for one final public hearing.
And did I hear correctly that you mentioned watershed boundary?
Yes. Yep.
I, I assume that's going to look just like the main drinking water proposed.
I, I believe that's going to be the recommendation of the ad hoc group. Um, I do need to look at how that one's getting initiated, I guess, to make sure that's done appropriately. Um, we may need to talk to the council to initiate that, or ask this board to initiate it. Need to check on that.
Okay. Any other questions? If none, I would seek a most intu return.
So moved.
Uh, do you have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?